Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Today is May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and it's right now six oh one P M. Madam Clerk, can please take your call.
David Della.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
He's in Washington, D.C., Madam Chair.
Thank you.
He's like the new president. Third time this week.
Mo Baydoun.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston. Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Winslow.
Here.
Mister Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next up is our pledge of allegiance, and that's going to be led by Councilman Ray Muscat.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up is agenda approved.
Council Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting of May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, as submitted.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Muscat, and discussion on that. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the... Oh, it's on. So we moved it. Yes, speaking of councilmen, I know I emailed everyone. People are complaining sometimes they can't hear us on Zoom, so please make sure when you... I sent all the emails. No. Difficult time, Winslow, I know we do that. Make sure you're speaking through the microphone. All right. Next up is approval of the minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, as outlined in four A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Baydoun and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Our next item is minutes from the special meeting of May the second.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the special meeting of May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, as outlined in four B.
May second, just to be clear.
Support. Yeah, May second.
May second, two thousand twenty-three. Motion made by Councilwoman Muscat, supported by Councilwoman Baydoun. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is minutes from the special meeting of April twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the special meeting of April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, as outlined in four C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Baydoun and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. All right, now we get to the good stuff. Next up on our agenda is public hearings and comment on agenda items only. Again, I'd like to remind residents, this is only on agenda items. You will have two minutes. Please state your name, city, and street. Our Treasurer, come on up. Please state if you're speaking as a Treasurer or as a resident.
Good evening. I'm speaking as your city Treasurer. Thank you. I want to just briefly address item nine E on your council agenda. Let me grab my notes, sorry. All right, this is the item regarding the phase two of closing the bank accounts. And first of all, for the record, I will tell you I'm not opposed to that.
I apologize, Treasurer, that would be nine A.
Nine, nine E, E.
E, okay. I thought you said nine E.
Yeah, thank you. Unless you want to talk about nine A, but I'm ready for nine E. So, all right, back to nine E. All right, and this is the phase two. First of all, I wanted to note that phase one, per the council adopted resolution, was just recently completed on April twenty-sixth. That is exactly eight business days. We had, and again, through the conversations, I thought had a concurrence and agreed that, and this is true with any process change, it's always a good idea to work through your process and give things a time to settle and reevaluate to make sure you're getting the desired outcomes. And I don't think we've allowed for that enough time. Eight business days is certainly not adequate time. That's the only thing I wanted to say. What is the impact? What is the outcome? Is it doing what we want to do? How are we doing with a pooled accounting on those few accounts that I would call low-hanging fruit? That was the first thing. The second thing I want you to note, just for public information and the council body, that the Dearborn Federal Savings Banks, there should be three accounts. If you're going to close one, you might as well close all three. You've got your water, you've got your tax, and general fund, which is not on air. That is a payment center, a remote payment center for the residents of our community. So, it has been for many, many years. That's the reason why we have the accounts there, to take payments. If you choose to close those today, you will no longer have payment, a payment center off-site in Dearborn Heights, the south end, by the way, on Telegraph, and the north end right here on Warren. You're taking that away from your residents, so just to share that with you. And then the last note I have, when you look at your water and your water escrow accounts, we actually go to water escrow, that is not a Comerica account. That is a Chase account. Whoever created this document, all due respect to them, that is not correct and should be corrected. And the other recommendation I'm going to make, and this will be the last one, anything that's related to water, and we know water is an enterprise fund, I would not put in general fund, I would put it into a water account, designated water fund, such as Comerica, ending in seven four zero three. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer. Any other public comments? Come on up, city's street name, please.
Council Chair. Before she starts, I do want to give an apology. I know Mrs. Alloway reached out to me. I was supposed to send her over an email today, and I was so busy at work, and then I forgot, so please forgive me.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it. So, I'm Lisa Alloway.
Honorable to admit that.
I'm Lisa Alloway, Campus Drive. I actually had an opportunity to speak with... closer?
Yeah, as close as possible.
I actually had an opportunity to speak with Officer Bunker before the start of the meeting, and I spoke with him, and I was asking, what I wanted was a copy of the final draft of the flyer that details what responsible or lawful feeding looks like. And Officer Bunker actually shared with me last week his rough, rough draft of what he, of the flyer that he was working on. And he told me that actually Officer Dishun was able to approve it, just, I think, yesterday morning. And he assures me that the final draft looks like, or very much close, to what the rough draft looked like. And if that's what it is, I just want to say that I think it's very fair, it's reasonable, and it's very clear about what lawful feeding should look like.
And you said, and my question is to Officer Bunker, you don't have a copy of that?
This one, he gave it to us today. Right there. He just gave it to us just now, a little bit ago. Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? All right. Oh, Councilman. Please state if you're speaking as a councilman or as a resident.
Yes, thank you, I'm speaking, I guess, as a councilman. And I'm speaking on nine D, the restroom renovation change order number one at the Warren Valley Outdoor Restrooms. I toured the golf course a couple of weeks ago on opening day, and the restrooms are one of the stops. And I noticed there was some work already done on them, but a lot of work had to be done yet.
Wait, I'm sorry, Councilman, just to clear up, hold on one second. It's not nine E, though.
He said nine D. He said nine D.
Nine D. Okay.
Okay, they said E, go ahead.
All right, thank you. And I noticed some, the work, some of the work that was done, the brick tuck pointing wasn't done with mortar, it was done with like an epoxy or something. I was wondering what was going on. And then now we get this change order, original bid was nineteen thousand, now we're increasing it over fifty percent to thirty-one thousand. And I'm wondering why these restrooms are not ADA compliant. I noticed, I heard from someone that they're not going to be ADA compliant. I know in the past and today, I hold golf outings, I've had several at Warren Valley, and I do have a foursome that is disabled. And I was wondering why they're not going to be ADA compliant restrooms. I know it might be a money issue, and if that's the case, I know that the city purchased some netting for twenty-five thousand dollars that was not approved by city council. The check was written by the Treasurer, and I was wondering why the Treasurer would write a check for twenty-five thousand dollars without council approval. Would you like to speak on that?
Well, let's, let's hold off on some of the answers too. Just, we're going to have public comments, and we'll hold off on the answers until that particular section comes up.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I had to say, but I was wondering, because several council members stated in the past that no money is spent by the city over fifteen hundred dollars without city council approval. And this, plus this work for this netting is already scheduled to be done in June, and the netting is only eighteen feet high, and I don't know how that's going to stop a golf ball. You know, you've got to get netting that's like thirty feet high to stop golf balls, but that's it. Thank you so much.
Mister De, we'll have you comment on that when we get to that particular item, if you don't mind. Thank you. And then the Treasurer, if you need to. Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Come on up, Chief of Staff.
I just wanted to offer a little bit of history on item nine E. So as you recall, there was a presentation with four faces that Plant Moran recommended for the city to follow through. So, it was my understanding that account seven one nine one, which is what is, was in the past, the general fund, is supposed to be moved into pooled accounting. So, there will still be a method of separating your water funds from your general fund if you move into pooled accounting, which is what they've recommended all along. So I just want to clarify that, and again, Plant Moran is here. If anybody needs help understanding how that works, they work with our Controller Department and our Treasurer almost every week, so please feel free to stop by and ask them questions about how that's going to look. But again, it's the recommendation of the professionals to move in this path. And with regards to the timing of it, they actually had given us, this four phases should have been done by May. So we are already slowing down the process more than what Plant Moran has recommended, and they have recommended this for a long time now, various months. So I would encourage you to move forward. If you need additional time to get phase two completed, that's perfectly fine, but I don't want us to forget that these are the recommendations that we should be following. So we should get started on phase two if phase one is completed by now.
Thank you. Council Chair, real quickly while he's walking up here, come on up. Wait, no.
I just wanted, I wanted to speak on nine E also.
Is an item that's coming up? Let's wait until that item comes up, and we'll go ahead and address it.
Good evening, Director Swope from the Police Department. I'd just like to, we have a proclamation that was supposed to be read today that's on the agenda. I think it's important that we do that so we can recognize our police officers.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do our public comments, no problem.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
If you want to just, maybe you can hold up on the side since you only have one more public.
I thought that was it.
Anybody else in the audience?
You did your proclamation already?
Nobody, no, not yet. Nobody else in the audience, one on Zoom, go ahead, please. BJS.
Yeah.
Okay, hello, go ahead, you have two minutes, city's street and name, please.
Barbara Sapirsky, Woodworks Circle, Dearborn Heights.
Okay.
This regarding the animal ordinance. I would think that in order for citizens to comply with an ordinance, the ordinance should be clearly written. It has been pointed out multiple times by multiple citizens that indirect feeding, quote unquote, that's mentioned in section I, six ninety-seven, one, needs clarification. Since it still has not been clarified, can someone from city council please answer what that means? And please stop the clock if you guys are going to be answering.
Okay. You want to, Officer Bunker, you want to go ahead and address that? Or is Officer Dishun, is Director Dishun in?
I think it's Dishun's on Zoom.
Okay. Director, would you like to answer that, or do you want me to have Officer Bunker answer that? Is he on Zoom? There he is. Okay, we can hear you, go ahead.
What exactly is Mr. Sapirsky's question?
Ma'am, can you go ahead and repeat that question again?
Yes, what is the definition of indirect feeding?
What we are trying to avoid is people putting food on the ground. I know that the question has been raised before about garbings. If people are neglecting to clean up their garbings, that can be a concern if there's food falling on the ground. We're going to address these individually, case by case. So my goal has always been, from the moment I started this ordinance, to address the people that are directly feeding animals, especially those outside of cats, because we had issues where people are feeding animals on their front yard, and they have animals of all kinds coming to their front yard, and it looks like a nature preserve. So, we're going to have to deal with these on an individual basis. And that was the goal from the beginning, to try to address the other issues that have come up in the meantime.
Thank you. Okay, you can start the clock again. In section one, six ninety-seven, two, we are asking that the verbiage, quote unquote, prevents feed and seed from falling to the ground. This is regarding the bird feeders. We're asking that the verbiage be changed to, quote, limits amount of feed and seed that falls to the ground. I have yet to find a bird feeder that doesn't in some way drop both seed and feed from the feeder to the ground.
Council Chair. Wait, hold on, let's let the Director answer. Go ahead, Director.
Without getting, without getting into a debate on this one, when we, when we speak of bird feeders in particular, generally speaking, people that have those clean up the seeds that are on the ground after. Most of the time, when we have somebody that's feeding, if there's bird seed on the ground, it's usually as a result of somebody throwing food directly on the ground and not from a feeder. And a lot, a lot of times, they have, a lot of the feeders have spill guards underneath to prevent stuff from getting on the ground, we just ask that people clean them up. We haven't, we haven't had a lot of people that have feeders that it's been an issue. We've had a couple, but generally speaking, that's, that's not an issue in our department.
Well then, could the verbiage be changed to what I said, limits the amount of feed and seed that falls to the ground?
I, 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 we will address each one on an individual basis. We're here at the second reading, trying to get this put through. Again, we're not, I'm not gonna, I can't address every single concern that every single person has. This is just something we're trying to get out of the books, we had so many different complaints, and not necessarily with respect to bird feeders. Most of them come from direct feeding of other animals on the ground. We will, we will work with people to try to find solutions for every single incident that we have, unless there's a clear violation. I don't, I don't want people to not feed birds, but I don't want seeds on the ground because rats will eat anything. And again, we haven't had that many complaints about bird feeders, but we've had a few where people are just throwing seeds on the ground.
Okay, the next thing is section one, six ninety-seven, two B, about the pamphlet. I understand that it's available, and that really should be reviewed before, these three things that I mentioned should be reviewed before this is approved. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Mary Ann on Zoom, please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yes, I'm just wondering if there's anything in the book.
Wait, ma'am, I'm sorry, I need name, city, and street, please.
I'm sorry, my name is Mary Ann Marchena, Dearborn Heights, Ivy Street.
Okay, go ahead.
And I am wondering if there's anything in the books about people feeding cats. I have a problem where the next-door neighbor is feeding cats, and they're using my backyard as a litter box. I try to keep my property up, and it's become a problem between the neighbors.
Okay, we will go ahead and, we will be addressing that, ma'am, as that particular subject comes up. I know Officer Bunker or Officer Dishun will be talking on this subject as it comes up. So if you don't mind, one of you two, if you could address that, please. But that's the main thing of this particular ordinance, it is addressing the cat feeding.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Next up, we're going to go ahead to Police Chief Hart, yes. There you are, I was just coming, yeah. Police Chief Hart and the Director, proclamation for National Peace Officers Week. Come on up.
Yeah, sorry for jumping in the gun there, I just thought you passed up, you know, our section there.
I just came in from a flight like an hour and a half ago, so I'm still not all there.
Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you.
I'm Director Swope from the Police Department. Police Week is coming up, so we have a proclamation from, from the mayor to recognize our police officers, you know, from within the city and across the nation. Proclamation for National Police Week, two thousand twenty-three, May fifteenth through the twenty-first, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May fifteenth falls is National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Dearborn Heights play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Dearborn Heights, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the city of Dearborn Heights unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Bill Bazey, Mayor of the city of Dearborn Heights, call upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May fifteenth to May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the Dearborn Heights, of the city of Dearborn Heights, to observe May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Signed by Mayor Bill Bazey.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to personally thank all of our officers for their service, and then of course, honor our fallen police officers, so thank you. Next up is fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the special meeting. Nope, that's not where we are. Yep, six. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve their current claims and ACH wire transfers, six dash one to six dash nineteen, as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Baydoun and seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I want the record to reflect that Councilman Coniston is now here. I know you have it, but I want to mention it. Number two, I've been in contact with Director Vanderplow at the police station on item six seven. That was bothering me quite a bit. We spoke at length, sent emails back and forth. I just want to let everybody, the public, know that this is being watched carefully. Our service contracts are starting to be scrutinized very carefully, and I thank the Police Department for with this. It's something that's never been done before, and hopefully we can correct a lot of the issues that's been going on as far as building maintenance goes. I just want to say thank you to the Police Department for that. And in earlier previous meetings, I failed to thank the Dearborn Heights Fire Department for the great care they gave to me when they rushed me to the hospital one day. Thank you again for the service.
Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you, sir.
You all right, Councilman?
Yeah, it's been a few weeks now, so they did a wonderful job taking care of me.
They always do.
And I forgot to tip my cap to them.
Council Chair. Councilman, go ahead. I just want us to look at claim number six sixteen. And on there, it says that we're giving to Saad Law P L L C three thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars. When you add up the invoice, it comes out to one thousand two hundred ninety dollars. So I think there might have just been a typo or a mistake there. What'd you come up with, I'm sorry?
One thousand two hundred ninety dollars if you had.
No, because if you look at it, it's two units, so it'd be three hundred times two units, and then it'd be one point eight times two seventy, two point eight times four twenty, and then two, two times three hundred.
Oh, did I miscalculate that?
Yes, that's how they're doing it.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's okay. Any other questions from council members? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item seven, consideration of bids. C E D D Director Jamal bid award to federal grants legal services.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for federal grants legal service to Maru and Halaman L L P, the amount of one hundred and forty dollars per hour as an Assistant Corporation Counsel. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign a three-year contract pending review and approval by the Assistant Corporation Counsel, Hassan Saad J D. This contract is subject to a two-year renewal from the date of expiration pending city council approval. Furthermore, authorize the Treasurer to issue payment according to the city charter, section eight point nine, as outlined in seven A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Coniston, any discussion on that? I had a question for either the Director, C E D D Director, or our Corporation Counsel. I'm not sure who would answer that better, but, sorry? Yeah. But there was two bids, there was one bid that was quite a bit higher than the rest, but there were two bids at a hundred and forty dollars an hour, and one, and obviously, I know it's not always necessarily the lowest bid that we take, we just take whoever is considered best, but in this case, they were both the same price. I'm just wondering, for my peace of mind, why was one particular company picked over the other with no preference from my end? I'm just trying to understand. Okay. You gotta put your microphone on, I don't think it's on.
I just recused myself.
Okay, so Director, can you give us a briefing as far as why one was picked over the other? You gotta unmute yourself.
Which Director are you asking?
Jamal.
Jamal.
Hassan Jamal. Director? Director Jamal? On him? He's on, I seen him, there he is. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Your question is valid. We have a process according to C F R two hundred, which is the Federal Improvement Regulations, that we go through a preset evaluation process, and that's, you know, done by Assistant Corporation Counsel, Dr. Saad, and recommended to me, I agree with, and I see no problem with his recommendation. In terms of related experience and expertise, has been presented during the vet dealing with municipal similar work that we are applying.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm understanding, so you basically felt a little bit more comfortable based on the interview process with the one company over the other, is that correct?
There is no comfortability over here. It was an evaluation by a peer, you know, director of jurisdictions, you know? Both of them are jurors, and he was commissioned according to the vet to do the evaluation from his, in his means, the Assistant Corporation Counsel, Dr. Saad, and recommended to me for regulatory process. So I find no issue with the regulatory process in terms of the vet process, but from the legal expertise and evaluation of the capacity capability of legal, I'm not the expert, you know? not the expert, you know, Dr. Saad was the expert and he recommended that to the mayor.
Okay.
Because the, because his email is privileged, that's why it wasn't included, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, let's go ahead and take that, any other discussions on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item seven B, ordinance and animal control director dishroom.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dear, the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the, for the grass-cutting service agreement between the city and artistic landscaping and lawn service. In addition, authorize the mayor and a clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city and a treasurer to issue payment. Furthermore, provide them, provided that the mayor also authorizes any such payment as necessary expense, the city council authorized warrants to be issued for the payments of these services. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by the consist and consistent with the city charter, section eight point nine, as outlined in seven B.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman? I'm okay. Okay. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Treasurer Hicks Clayton, online payment platform agreement.
Anyone? Council Chair. To wait for somebody else to take a turn. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved agreement with G S G Forte Payment Inc. as outlined in payment service subject to corporate council review and approval as outlined in nine A.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bedu. Any discussion on that? Uh, Treasurer, go ahead.
Hi, no, I don't really have anything to add other than, um, you know, you have a very complete packet. And of course, the agreement is contingent upon our attorney, Miss, Mr. Roger over there, right? Um, I know you had some changes that you wanted to see and I I think you are in discussion with C S G, um, Forte. But if you recall on March sixth, you've already, as a council body, approved Civic Plus Agreement, which is for the website. This is the companion, a complement companion for payment, online payment platform, which is why we're recommending it. But, um, the treasurer's office was already in discussion with another company as well as the current one that we already have. So we gave you that comparison so you could see why we chose to go with the recommendation of C S G Forte. And, um, again, I think it's, the information is very, uh, complete and hopefully conclusive for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussions on that?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I was just wondering, at the time we did the first portion, did we know that this one was going to be coming up as an additional expense?
It was brought to my attention and I had advised the, um, administration that the treasurer's office was already in discussion, interviewing and, you know, trying to field out other companies, which is why it took us a little longer to get this to you. But the answer is yes, to your ant question directly. Uh, basically though, when you look at the fee pricing schedule, which should be on page four maybe of your packet, three or four, it's three on mine, but it says pricing fee schedule across there. When you look at that, it is pretty much the same as what we already have in place with, um, point and pay. And I do have a representative from C S G Forte on today. If you have any additional questions, um, his name is Jason, I think, I hope Jason's on there, maybe you can raise your hand if you are, but, um, he can also answer your questions. But again, we're not going to see an incurred, like, cost increase to our residents, but what we're going to see is a payment platform that we can expand upon and include additional services to our residents, like for your paid-for services, like building permits, things like that. So, we're wanting to improve that.
For those who are not familiar, um, our city through administration right now is going into a direction where a lot of things are going to be able to be done online. And this is one of the features that will, of course, help, help with that. Uh, any other discussions on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item nine B, C E D D Director Jamal, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, three, C E D D dash slash C D B G Action Plan Funding Amendment Table.
Council Chair.
Yeah, those two are together.
I got it. Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, C E D D, C D B G Action Plan Funding Amendment Table one and two, and authorize the C E D D Director to process the necessary record adjustment according to applicable rule of regulation. In addition, authorize the Comptroller to amend the Fund one oh three general ledger account accordingly as outlined in nine B.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedu and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Uh, I'd like to ask Director Jamal, if we're going to have for the next budgets, C D B G, C E D budget, if we're going to be allowed to put our recommendation on how the funds are going to be spent? Have we've done that in the past? Is that going to happen again?
Of course, of course, uh, on the fifteen, as you may, uh, may remember, you was attending, uh, another budget amendment meeting. So this is not going to be a budget amendment on the fifteen. At Eaton Center, we have a public hearing, first, a public hearing to discuss the applications for funding from outside agencies and internal agencies. You are welcome to be there. Uh, second public hearing will be presenting, uh, the budget. If there is, uh, agreement, we move on to, uh, environmental clearance and, uh, you know, E R record, the front plan. So yes, of course, the, uh, the final, the final decision on adopting, uh, you know, the one, uh, one million dollar, it would be your decision. Uh, we only recommend, uh, with discussion with the administration, uh, after we, uh, you know, clear, uh, the project that we applied for to qualify them and they will be presented to you, of course.
Director, uh, is it possible that we can, um, make that meeting known sooner and make it at a time where actual, a lot of people can attend because people come home from work or they're at work? And I'd like to see, you know, last time we were there, there was no one there but myself. And I don't know how well.
That was an odd, because I I am trying to, uh, to do what we call, you know, a source of justice for the demographic, uh, you know, uh, and distribution of the way the city is shaped. So, and that's encouraged by, by heart and by all federal agencies. Therefore, uh, dividing, you know, equally as much as possible, our public hearing.
I'm not saying where, I'm just saying the time, make it so people can get to the meeting.
Yeah, time is, uh, four fifteen to encourage, uh, the city directors because most of our grant are directed at the city directors.
Four fifteen, people are still at work, Director? I mean.
It's part of their work to attend.
I I understand, but we can, we can make a time where it's a public hearing. So we gotta make it available to the public so they can get there. Four fifteen is way too early for people. Or five thirty.
You know, a second public hearing, which will be most important because it will become budgetary, will, uh, will, will move it to maybe, uh, a little bit further, like five thirty. So we'll allow, we'll allow more, more, more participation.
It's getting better. I mean, our city council meeting started at six o'clock.
Very often, last time we did, uh, we did it at Eaton Center like we do it now. We did it, uh, you know, around four fifteen. We had a lot of seniors who are concerning, uh, you know, and a lot of other voters, uh, you know, especially.
I'm just concerned about the people that still are at work. And being a public hearing, we need to make it fair for the entire public to be able to attend. You know, people come home, they gotta cook dinner, they gotta feed their kids. Uh, you know, this is, I'm retired, so I'm very flexible, but other people are not.
We, we tried in the past to make it six, nobody attended. We made, we made it, if we made it seven, it's too late. So, you know, uh, I, I, I'm taking your, I'm taking your consideration, your, your recommendation as solid. So next time, it will be after five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine C, City Engineer Div, Street Pavement Repair Program.
Council Chair.
Uh, we'll give that one to Councilman Constance. Go ahead.
Absolutely.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Bedu. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve this Street Pavement Order Program Change Order Number One to modify the original contracts' unit prices and authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment as outlined in nine C.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Constance, supported by Councilman Bedu. Any questions on that?
Council Chair.
Go ahead.
I've been looking at this closely and I, and I contacted, uh, our engineer, Ali Deeb, about this and I know we had a motion to approve these people. Um, uh, I, I, I just, I'm looking at it now. It, it, something is, does, doesn't smell right with this company. Um, they haven't started working yet. I know they wanted to change unit pricing and all of that. It's a very small company to do a large work, okay? And when I try to look them up, I, I can't find hardly anything on them at all. And yet there's a company out there that we're, that's actually doing work for us now, uh, and I think they're a few dollars cheaper anyway, and it's a larger company that's been rolling right along through the city and doing work. And, I mean, this company hasn't even started working yet. And, and yet cement's being poured for a month, month and a half already. And the further we go, that they're not ready.
No, but they've done some, they've done some work.
I, I, I don't think they, they haven't started work. Okay? And regardless if they started some work, they're doing it without a contract. Okay? And with, and it's not, that's not kosher. So, I, I just, I, I just feel that this company, uh, Villanova seems like they're a big, big construction company that's, that's, a- and I've seen their work and they're doing magnificent work. And, um, I, I, I just don't like this company. And, and all the research I'm doing, I can't find hardly nothing on them. So, um, I, I can't support this at all.
Go ahead, Director.
Okay, so, um, there is a contract in place and that contract was signed and approved by council and it was publicly bid last year. Um, and the contract value is one million fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. That contract was publicly bid. Um, if you have better companies, they should have bid that contract. This is sectional. Second, six hundred thousand of that contract was spent before the cold weather set last year. So we still have approximately four hundred thousand under the old contract. So it is an existing contract. We have, we signed the contract, we're halfway through it. Um, they are mobilizing. Um, the, the change order is simply the cost of material adjustment from last year. Now, I've checked around on that same company, it does have, this company has contracts with other municipalities and we are still getting better prices only because we have a form, a bid from last year. So I'm holding them, the bid was forty-eight. Current prices for the same work at seven inch non-reinforced, they're going for seventy-two dollars. And that was just open public bid last week. So two communities signed with the same company at seventy-two. I'm getting, I'm nego, we negotiated it to fifty-five, from forty-eight to fifty-five. We're still getting a good deal. We're getting a real good deal. Now, um, uh, in terms of quality work, uh, we sell, we had no issues with them last year at all. The work that was completed on sections now, this is not for replacement, these are sections, complete sections, cut, removed. We had no issues with them. The quality was fine, material was fine, the cost was good. Um, we can re, rebid the contract if you like and, uh, you know, cancel the existing, but I don't recommend it. We will not get that price. You will not get fifty-five dollars if you rebid it, but it's up to you.
Council Chair, I, I'd like to know if, if, uh, Mr. Wakeland is on, if he could interject with some numbers that he and I were, were talking about as far as pricing goes. I, I, you know, I've got so much on my mind here, I, I lose dollar values and, and I'm a horrible note taker and I apologize for that. But if, uh, Mr. Wakeland can chime in, I'd appreciate it.
Rick is online, I see him on Zoom. Rick, can you unmute, please? Okay, while Rick is unmuting, um, Director, if you could answer that for me. So for clarification, so we have a contract, we've agreed on a price, they started the work, old man winter came in. Why is the price changing if we already have a contract?
We have a contract, but it was, it was an annual, so the price, the price, the material price have increased. We, we didn't see that. I mean, we bid on last year's prices.
So what did the contract say, subject to the price of concrete not changing?
It's cost plus, it's cost plus, it's cost plus the labor.
Cost of material plus the labor.
So we've had.
So the labor, they're not changing the price?
We can deny it, we can absolutely deny it. I'll be all for it. Deny it and I'll be happy to rebid it, but I can assure you will not get that price.
No, 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 I'm trying to understand.
I want, I mean.
No, I get what you're saying, but what I'm, what I'm asking is, if they agreed to a certain price.
Sir.
You're saying the labor is pretty great, that's not changing.
You're getting seven inch concrete for fifty-five, fifty-five dollars a yard, square yard. That is unheard of.
No, 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 but that's not what I'm asking. That's what's being bid today. What I'm asking is, if they agreed to forty-eight per a contract and they started work on it.
Deny it, we'll fight the con, I'll fight it, I'm denying it.
Mr. Deeb, he's asking a question about the contract. He's not talking about what the price that they're doing.
It's price, it's cost plus. So there is an existing contract and you can hold them to it and take them to court. I'll be, but you're not going to get any work done.
Are these the ones that did the, by like papaya where they were like, did little sections for us?
Sections, we did six hundred thousand dollars worth of sectioning last year before the cold weather set, sixty percent of it.
Okay, but I just want to clarify, so what you're saying is, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, is per the contract, right now technically they have to abide by those original prices, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But they're saying, okay, I know we agreed to a contract, but prices have gone up, so therefore work with us to raise this, is that correct? That's what I thought I was understanding.
And, and so I gathered the same work for similar seven inch non-reinforced concrete with thirty-five P mix, so the good commercial mix for that other communities are doing and compared the prices before we negotiated the number. So I'm looking, their low bid for other communities at seventy-two dollars a square yard.
But that's if there's a new contract, but on the old contract.
Sir, please deny it, please. I want you to deny it now. I want you to deny it.
I know, but Mr. Deeb.
I wanted to go to, deny it.
The conversation isn't about denying it though.
Deny it, because you're not gonna, you're not gonna get any work done. I mean, it's simple as that. So deny it, if that's the cause, if you don't like it, this is up to you. Please deny it. This is a good contract. You're not gonna get that price.
I know, but we're agreeing, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but it's, uh, in the, in the same point, I'm just not understanding, maybe our corporate council, I mean, we agreed to forty-eight and it's a contract, so if they can't abide by a contract, then why even sign a contract?
Okay.
And i- is this the same company that did some of the work on George and different streets, a little section?
All the section.
They did a good job.
They, they're, yes.
They did do a good job.
And just to compare, that company's forty-eight dollars last year to what we paid Hard Rock, it was ninety dollars, just to give you an idea.
I get that totally, but in the same token, they agreed on forty-eight.
Are you saying it's, it's like a change order, there's been a change in the prices maybe that's affecting the contract? I don't have the contract in front of me. But it sounds like that's what he's saying, um, with the materials. I don't know if the contract provided for that, I wasn't, I didn't sign, prepare that contract, it was before me, but I will look at the contract, uh, Council Chair.
Okay.
And see and verify if we need to come back to you for any modification that was made to the contract.
Uh, i- 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 and I'm gonna agree with, with, uh, uh, Ali Deeb on this as far as the money. Um, because even previously, we go and we purchased vehicles from Ford Motor Company for, for police. And then all of a sudden they come back, say, well, the price of the car went up, now we gotta pay for it, even though after we've approved the contract for buying those vehicles. A lot of these construction companies add that into their, their quotes that have, you know, pricing, you buy, build a house and all of a sudden now the price of lumber went up, uh, two dollars per two by four, well. You buy, build a house and all of a sudden now the price of lumber went up, uh, two dollars per two by four, well, they're not gonna eat it, you're gonna eat it.
But my, I think if it said that in the contract, that's okay, but I, I, I just want to give you guys a quick example. Believe it or not, this is a life example. It happened to me today.
I had a man come and give me a quote, uh, for some concrete, believe it or not, no pun intended, but, um, and it was initially seven dollars a, a yard or a square foot. Today he came to me at twelve dollars a square foot and it's just one summer and I went, are you kidding me? That's almost half.
Mister Bedun, this is, this is at six dollars a square foot.
Can I hire, can I hire them too?
I'm just, I'm not trying to defend them. I'm just saying that this was a negotiated price. It's not a bad price. I'll be happy to put it back out on the street. It's.
Well, I'm not asking to put it back on the street. What I'm asking is, why can't we just enforce it?
Council Chair, with your permission, I will review the contract and then I'll get you a written.
Okay, thank you.
But, you know, again, I, I, do you know how much Villanova's charging us for their cement work?
Okay, so what, the, the bids for Villanova is for sidewalk and approaches. This is, this is different. This is for catch basins and full depth, seven inch concrete with dollars. So the bid was, the bid, the Villanova did not include this. We did not have that in it.
So when, when you, you, you said previously on this, there was, uh, no reinforced concrete at six yard.
No, no reinforced.
It is reinforced?
No, no, no. No mesh, no reinforcement. The, uh, the epoxy coated lane ties are the steel that you tie.
Yeah, I'm just talking about a rerod still in there, right?
That's just a section. It's a, it's a lane tie. You tie the new concrete to the old concrete. It's not the steel mesh. Yes, absolutely. And it has to be epoxy coated so it doesn't rust. Absolutely. So this was bid as a pavement contract, not as a sidewalk and approach.
Guys, six dollars a square foot is unheard of. Guys, I promise you, you, we all have a fiduciary duty. This is one of the best fiduciary duties I think we've ever gonna vote on. At least for myself, I find anyone that votes no on this, this is very, very hard. Take it from me, I legit just got somebody, which I'm gonna call this company, if you can offer six, if you can offer me ten, I'll take it.
I, I'm just, this was negotiated, uh, because they wanted actually seventy-two, which is what they're getting from other communities. But because of the forty-eight dollars that we had in, in place, we were able to.
But I want you to know that where Council Chair is coming from, they should, I mean, we could, we could sue them right now. I, I mean, it, it is what it is. At the end of the day, they agreed to a contract.
I have no.
However, the six dollars a square foot, I mean, you know, they, they really, you know, they're, they're holding us, they're pushing us to the wall. I get it. So it, you know, it's, do you go to court and fight and to get them back to that, but you know, then do you go back and lose out on having more work done and I get it.
Let's go ahead and take this to a vote. Um, uh, item may, uh, motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
I'm a no.
Ready?
Madam Clerk?
Dave Abdallah.
No.
Mo Bedun.
Come on, guys. Yes.
Nancy Brier.
Yes.
Robert Constance.
Yes.
Ray Muscat.
No.
Tom Wenzel.
No.
Tie vote, motion fails.
I'm sorry?
Tie vote, motion fails.
Yep, okay. Motion carried.
No, fails.
This motion failed, sorry. Said passed.
No, I said it fails.
Oh, sorry.
Tie vote, motion fails.
Okay, sorry about that. I thought you said passed. Okay.
I, I just, I just want you guys to know, I promise you.
This is not over. Don't forget. He's gonna look over the contract. I personally would like to see, go back and say, look, you guys put a contract. I mean, I, I don't know, what's the sense of signing a contract then? And say, look, honor your contract or get something more reasonable.
But there, there won't be any work done, just so you know. So there's not gonna be any work done.
Is this, are these the people that are gonna be also working up and down in Evangeline?
We just had them, uh, measure all the stuff and we painted it and we contacted Ms., Ms. Diggs so we can clear the utilities, but so, we'll just all stop.
You guys, I mean, I, I promise you, this is a good deal. I promise you. It's a good deal, Council Chair. I'd love to see you. Look, I never lobby. But if there's ever a time I'm gonna ask you to change your vote, I swear to God, today's the first time I'm ever gonna do that.
My biggest concern is this, is people not honoring their contract.
I agree with you. And then you know what?
I'm gonna, i- i- just to not stop the work for the residents, I'm gonna change my vote, but I'm gonna tell you something. I'm, I'm really, really concerned. I don't want contractors to think they could come in here and just change their numbers on us. I get, I get it. Listen, I, I get it that the materials changed, but then they should have been in the contract initially. It's subject to the particular price.
If they bid that price initially, we wouldn't have given them the contract because last year it was cheaper. So if they had bid that higher price and they, they, they were.
I remember you saying they were moving faster than anything.
But they actually paid, they, they gave us a good price last year too, so I mean, it's.
Madam Clerk, is it okay to redo the vote? Okay? So, uh.
Should have been a lobbyist.
Is there a particular way that you want us to do it, Madam Clerk? Or just go ahead and vote it? I'm sorry?
I'm looking it up.
Okay. Give us a second. Is it okay to go to the next item and come back to us?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So, so this one's gonna be put on, item nine C is gonna put on hold for a sec. Next item on the agenda is item nine D, City Engineer Dib, Warren Valley Golf Course Outdoor Restroom Repairs Contract.
Council Chair.
All right, let's start this again, but we're gonna go, we'll go with Councilman, uh, Muscat. Yep, go ahead. Constance, all right, Councilman Constance, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Warren Valley Golf Course Outdoor Restroom Repairs Contract. Change Order One in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-six cents for total project cost of thirty-one thousand four five, four hundred fifty-two dollars and twelve cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or the clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue pay accordingly as outlined in nine D.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
All right, uh, let's go with Councilman, uh, Wenzel first.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, like I stated earlier, um, I took a tour of these restrooms and some of the things that they pointed out in these photos, they said they didn't realize, it's blatant, it's right there. I mean, it wasn't covered by anything. They said it discovered rotted wood. Uh, the quality of work that's done so far is questionable. I looked at it, like I stated, that the tuck pointing on the brick was, looks like it's not done with mortars, look with some kind of epoxy or something. This doesn't match at all. And my main concern is that the fact that these are not ADA compliant restrooms. It just shows, it goes to show what the administration or the people who okayed this, um, that, uh, they care more about several other things on a golf course than our disabled Americans. Um, uh, not having the ADA compliant restrooms out in the, in the golf course. And at this moment, at this time, the golf course is open and there are no ADA accessible restrooms at all on the golf course or any of the property. It concerns me a lot. I mean, I, there's gotta be some kind of violation to open up a business without any ADA compliant restrooms.
May I? Okay, so I'm gonna point one thing to, to, to your Honorable Counsel, that the contract from the start was to repair restroom repairs. It was not to reconstruct the bathrooms. This was a repair project. So if we're talking about a full replacement with ADA compliant with, the whole structure will have to be demoed. So that's not a repair. The contract was for, simply for the repairs. Now, the, um, uh, quality of the work, we haven't paid anything. This project's still being, uh, uh, reviewed now. We haven't made any progress payment. So there's a punch list item, there's a whole bunch of stuff that the inspectors will have to, um, um, uh, list and approve before payments are made. So we haven't made any payments on, on this repair. And this is a repair contract. The third item is that the, um, the issues that were discovered were all verified. Um, the structures where we, uh, where we, um, asked them to remove the, uh, the hole in the roof and put shingles and, and patch the plywood. When they went to do that, remove the plywood, the support, the, the, the joints, you could put your finger right through them. Uh, we had issues, we had, we had, we had rats in the roof. We had live rats. We had this. So apparently, these things were ignored for a long, longer period of time than what we expected. Uh, having a hole in the roof the size of big, big holes in the roof.
We've seen the picture you provided.
So that, that caused a lot of damage that wasn't visible before. So we want it, while it is a repair, but we didn't wanna do it in a way that will cause more damage. We're trying to do it the right way, but it is still a repair. It's not a, it's not a full replacement. Uh, we had issues, the water, uh, service wasn't, uh, working. Uh, we did not expect a place that was fully operational the year before not to have, um, shut-off valve. So we brought it up to code. We have a working restroom. It's not a Taj Mahal. We didn't wanna spend exorbitant amount of money. But just to add one more thing, um, in any, uh, change order, what we do is we review the original contract amount and compare it to the rest of the bids. So I'm gonna give you one, the, a simple statistics and you can verify those numbers. When I brought that contract out for repairs, uh, the first time to the, to the, uh, City Council, the original bidder was nineteen-nine fifty-five, that's the low bidder that we selected, and it was a publicly bid, three bids were received. Second bidder was forty-four seven fifty and the third bidder was twenty-eight three four seven. So we knew going in, the low bidder wasn't low and we had him out there and he looked at it and he agreed. Now, we, even with the change order at thirty-one four fifty-two, which is the new contract amount, he is still thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents below the second bid. So he's still the low bidder even with that change order and he is twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents below the third bidder. So this contractor is not, we, the numbers we negotiate are verified and they're true. So he's not trying to gouge us. We, we don't just take a request and approve it. We go through it.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel. I believe the, the original verbiage was renovated, restroom renovations.
Restroom repairs.
I, I, and not repair, I think, and what, what that was, was proved by City Council. It was restroom renovations.
That doesn't make it ADA compliant.
Um, well, you, I looked it up and it's, uh, it was on April eighteenth, authorizations, signed a contract approval, Warren Valley Golf Course. It's renovations number twenty-three dash one four three for golf course pass. Renovations to the construction equipment storage, renovations to construction, restoration of two outdoor, outdoor bathrooms.
The only thing I'm thinking on my end, Councilman, the word renovations would be update, the way I would look at it. It's like you would in a home, when you do renovations to a home, you update the home. And when you update the home, and I'm just thinking out loud here, you don't tear it down and start from new. Making it ADA compliant, I can see how obviously that would be a lot more expensive. And, and, and I'd like everybody to keep in mind, it doesn't stop us from putting in an additional bathroom down the line.
Well, this is our chance to have a world-class golf course and we're gonna have, you know, the best greens and everything else around, but we're gonna have non-compliant restrooms. I mean, we, we're, we're gonna spend twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand on some nets, but we can't put another, we can't put that twenty-five thousand into our restrooms.
Are you saying that our bathrooms are not ADA compliant?
No.
Are, Mr. Dib, are they ADP?
They're not. They were never, they were never ADA compliant.
They weren't in the past either.
What?
They were. For one thing, for one thing, there is no electrical service to these bathrooms. So do you understand how far I have to go to be, to put electrical service and conduits and do it the right way up to code to get it to the remote areas? There aren't any. These are existing outdoor type facilities. We had them, they were in sad, really bad shape. We, we renovated, um, repaired, renovated, but we did not demo them and rebuild them. And to make a bathroom ADA compliant, there are a lot of requirements. This will have to be totally demoed. You have to demo it. Totally.
If, if you've seen the bathrooms, I mean, I have seen them, they're the size of a closet right now.
You'll have to demo it. Even the entryway, the, the vestibule, the doorwoods, the whole thing, they will have to be demoed.
So, and, and I know you can't give an exact quote, but just based on your expertise, if these were to become ADA compliant, I know it's a much higher obviously expense, just roughly in your head, you'd have to obviously demo it and start from scratch. What would that cost?
Foundations, uh, electrical, the, the, the largest part is the utilities. See, you are in the remote area. You're not located in the city block where you have accessible utilities. It took us four, five days or more to find the shut-off valve to one bathroom. We had to go to the county parks because our, our people didn't know where, we had to put tracer with electric to find where the, uh, stop valve was on the, on one restroom. It, our, our people did it.
Council Chair. I, I do understand the Councilman's concern. I'm just trying to.
My recommendation, my recommendation to build a new one.
I've, I've been to events where they've had, uh, ADA compliant, uh, portable restrooms, not the portage on time, but a little bit bigger. So you don't need a giant restroom. All you need is enough to get a wheelchair through the door and a toilet with handrails, the proper handrails. And that, that bathroom, actually, it's about five feet by eight or ten feet or something, those are. And there's plenty of room. They, they have, they have ADA compliant portages that are four feet by four feet.
Council Chair. Okay, I think Council, were you trying to say something?
Uh, my question is, well, that was one of my questions was, can someone in a wheelchair fit into that?
The door opening is not large enough.
Change the doors.
The door opening is not large enough.
Change that door.
Council Chair. Wait, let, you outside? Okay, Councilman, go ahead.
I've been to a lot of golf courses and I haven't seen one yet that has that. And I'm sure Inkster Valley doesn't have them. Don't have them. So let's not try to throw things in here to make this golf course look bad because that's what I see it. And when something was mentioned of twenty-five thousand for a net that wasn't approved by City Council, that was part of the CFO. So it was approved by City Council and I know that for a fact. And there was netting there before because the poles were still there. So let's not try to inject things that really aren't there to stir up the public, okay? And make things just even worse for everybody. Let's at least get the facts straight. And if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong and prove to me that other golf courses have this.
This is our chance.
Your Inkster Valley doesn't have it, Mr. Wenzel.
This is our chance. We're remodeling right now. Inkster Valley is not remodeling.
But we need to have a little bit more time to be able to do that.
I want the, I want the treasurer to speak on the, uh, the check she wrote for the netting.
I'm just telling you what it was from. It was from the CFO. Read your, read your material once in a while and you'll see where it's at. If you read your material, you would know where it's at.
You know I didn't read my material? Where's it at?
You must not have read it because you don't know what it is.
Where's it at, where's it at, Councilman?
All you had to do was walk in the city hall, anytime you find a Councilman and ask a question. You're always saying something negative about a golf course that you, that you said you liked.
Where's it at? Councilman?
Okay, let's hold on.
Councilman, tell me where it's at. Oh, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Treasurer.
Okay, so let's answer that question for you, uh, Councilman Wenzel. Again, remember the process of issuing a check starts in the comptroller's office with accounts payable. All right? When I get the check, remember, we have the mayor signed it, the comptroller or the clerk has signed it and then I am the third signature that's required per the charter, section eight point nine. So I just wanted to go over that real quick. You mentioned the fifteen hundred dollars and I do wanna visit that real quick because I think that's something we really need to clear the air on. In your charter, in your ordinances, there's nowhere that talks about fifteen hundred dollars other than section two point, or excuse me, two dash eight zero four, material supply and good purchases. The city shall be allowed to purchase materials, goods, supplies and other things, thing or things for costs not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars without necessary or necessity of competitive bidding. This is all due to procurement is what we're talking about, not actually signing your checks. But, but it always has been kind of a precedent, right? Kind of the standard of what you do, what you bring to council. So when that check came across to me, and any check and all checks, when they come again, across to me, I always check the general ledger to make sure they're not exhausted. I always check the invoice to make sure they're signed and dated by Department Ed. This one was signed and dated by Chief of Staff Hernandez. Um, and in addition, as Councilman Muscat mentioned, the certificate of occupancy and that was a safety issue with the opening, right? And that it had already been ordered and placed. And then what I said, and I'm just gonna put it out there, I said to the comptroller, I said, it would be wise to bring it back to the council again just to let them know so they can approve it. And I do believe it's on the agenda today because of our conversation. Though it was already approved with your CFO, but as a, a good practice, right?
What is this net for?
Uh, it's, 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 I'm not a net person. I'm not a golfer.
Because I remember. Just give me one second for a second, guys. I asked, I asked this question, and hang on one second. I asked this question because in the, Director Lawrence Sallis on here, I believe we paid anywhere around three to four hundred thousand dollars the last time we approved the net, that was off of Ann Arbor Trail. So twenty-five thousand dollars would be a, not even a quarter of what.
It was a little over twenty-four thousand. I don't remember the exact amount.
Three hundred and fifty thousand, so why are we skimping this one?
I don't have the answer to that because I didn't order it. I'm just explaining the check and what happened.
Okay, Chief Staff, go ahead.
So somebody else might be able to. Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I didn't catch your last question.
Sorry, I, I didn't catch your last question, Mo.
So when we've initially, one of the first votes that I made, believe it or not, on city council, was the, was the netting of the, it was actually, I think, my second or third vote on council. And we approved a new netting for three to four hundred thousand dollars to be off of Ann Arbor Trail, because it was, you know, you know, hazardous society, we had actually photos of people that were living on Ann Arbor Trail with golf balls on their property. And so it was around three to four hundred thousand dollars. If this new one that we're getting is for twenty-four thousand, why are we getting the cheaper one? Why are we not getting the one that's adequate and, you know, making sure that we're protecting, because it's updating the CFO?
It's much smaller. Um, again, this is a replacement of a net that existed there. It is part of the, um, safety issue items that we needed to have done in the golf course in order to have a certificate of occupancy and not have balls going into resident houses.
What happened to the old net?
Uh, so it's different locations, so the golf course is large. Uh, but again, there was an existing structure with the pole, so we didn't have to put any of that. All they had to do was replace the net. Um, the provider that they, that we utilized, it's pretty much one of the only ones in the area that provides that type of netting for our area. And that we did our due diligence to get various different quotes for that, and that was simply the cheapest one that we had. And it was a security item that had been approved by the certificate of occupancy.
My question was, I, I was hoping, one, the three hundred thousand dollar one wasn't all torn up, because we had just approved it.
No, no, it's a, it's a different location.
Second, if we spent three hundred, why are we only spending twenty-four or twenty-five that we're spending now? Thank you.
Okay. So let's go ahead and take this to a vote. Um, motion made by Councilman Conston, and, I'm sorry, motion made, yes, by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilman Bedun, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Now, at this particular moment, someone make a motion to suspend the rules.
Council Chair.
All right, Councilman Bedun.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by. And this is for, this is for item nine C, okay, so seconded by Councilman Conston. Uh, all, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, ma'am clerk, we're gonna suspend the rule so we could revote on item nine C.
Okay, okay, I'll take that back, yes.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and revote on this. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. So now we're gonna go back to item nine C. At that moment, uh, Councilman Conston made the motion. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for somebody to redo the motion again and then resecond it.
Hold on. Right here, nine C, right here. I got it. That the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the street pavement repair program change order number one to modify the original contract's unit prices and authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasuries to payment according to, as outlined in nine C. Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston, support, seconded by Councilman Bedun, any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I, I'm just thinking out loud, I know, I think we just had this recently, where, never mind. We, I don't think we suspended the rules.
Well, only because we have to revote on this, we have to make a new motion.
You're gonna reconsider the motion.
Yeah, we're reconsidering the motion.
Okay.
All right, um, any other discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, ma'am clerk.
Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Mo Bedun?
Yes, thank God.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
Yes.
Ray Muscat?
No.
Motion carries, one, two, three, four, five.
Uh, Councilman Wenzel had to leave.
Four one.
Huh?
Four one.
Okay, thank you very much, motion carried, item nine C. Um, next item on the agenda is item nine E, Council Chair pro tem, Muscat, closure of bank accounts.
Did we do nine D?
Yes, we did.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Uh, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the closure of the following bank accounts to be completed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. In addition, authorize the treasurer to move the funds to the general ledger and bank accounts listed for each item as outlined in nine E.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Conston, any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
So I, I had the pleasure of having a conversation with our honorable treasurer, and, you know, she told me that amongst the conversation with herself and the comptroller, that they felt that they were still working before having to close these down. Um, and so I, I know I have Mr. Bedun here, who maybe can speak a little bit on that, as well as the treasurer. Uh, but, you know, at the, at the end of the day, this is your guys' expertise, and if you feel you still need more time, we shouldn't have to rush it, well, I want to hear that, and why. And if it's not, because I know that, uh, Plant Moran Gap said, you know, hey, let's speed up the process on this a little bit.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
You know, I'm going by what the real experts are telling us. They've been telling us for a long time. And who are we as this council? There's no one here that can even begin to compete with, with Plant Moran on what they know and how they do things. We've got these paperworks, the bank reconciliation, uh, uh, consulting recommendations by, by Plant Moran, and they give us benchmarks of all the cities around us on what they do. And I feel it's necessary to get the ball rolling.
I agree.
So that's all this thing is, is to get the ball rolling. Now, if they need more time to implement it, they can get more time. But I want the ball to roll, because we've been lacking as a council of not reading the recommendations of Plant Moran for years and years and years. Okay? And, uh, a, a, and it's time that we start recognizing the people we're paying hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to come in here and tell us what needs to be done. Okay? So that's my, you know, and, uh, that's my opinion on it, and that's why I put it on. And I'd like to see this stuff get done, because for too long, not everybody, you know, BSNA software that we paid a tremendous amount of money years ago, it's not being fully utilized. And that's just like buying a, a, a four thousand dollar computer, and all you know, all you know how to do is turn it on. This is ridiculous. That's what that BSNA software is supposed to do. It's help put money where it's supposed to be and tells everybody what's in their account.
Okay.
And it makes it easier, and it's, it's gonna save us so much aggravation in the future. Just learn how to use the doggone software.
Okay.
I'd like to hear.
Council Chair. Yeah, we're gonna, just quickly, I had a conversation with the treasurer, and when we originally approved this motion, this was based on implementation of the first phase on April twenty-fifth, I believe, or twenty-eighth.
Twenty-six. April twenty-six was the resolution that you adopted.
So with that being the case, I'm fully in favor of closure of all the accounts, and I voted yes on closure of, I'm sorry, not all the accounts, a lot of the recommended accounts, I should say. And I'm all in favor of that, but at the same time, I think, based on the fact that this was eight, nine business days ago, I, I agree with the treasurer that we gotta give more time to not only have the first phase implemented, but see any, any issues, any concerns, any things that need to be corrected. But I'm fully in favor of these accounts being closed, just maybe not today for me.
Council Chair.
Exactly. Um, and thank you, Council Chair, thank you, all council members. As I stated earlier during, uh, the comments section, I'm not opposing this. What I'm asking you, and, and I do want to go step backwards for a moment, saying that your finance team is not real is very concerning.
I never said it was real.
Please let me know what the phrasing was, maybe I misheard.
Well, you must work quite a bit if you said it, that it was not real.
All right, I want to go back to this. What I had said is anytime you change a process, there's steps in a process to be successful and best practices. That first phase, and I know you want to go very quickly, but changing things very rapidly without giving yourself the observation, the evaluation, the assessment, are we getting the outcome we desire? Is it getting the results we want? Maybe there's a hiccup, maybe there's something we need to change or modify, edit. You have to be aware of that and be willing to do that. We have not had ample time to do so with phase one, because again, by your resolution, you adopted this honorable body, that was April twenty-six, that's eight days. So that's why I contacted you, and that was my concern. Again, I'm not opposing this. I'm saying you need to work through the process and allow it. And I will also tell you that your finance team, your comptroller, your treasurer, our accountant here today, we are all working very diligently, very hard, to address the internal controls and systems that is what Plant Moran actually flagged us on in the first place, over and over and over for many years. We are working to resolve that, and there has been some major steps or baby steps, I don't know however you want to look at it, but there are steps. But you have to give us some time to do it. That's what we're asking for. I'm not opposed to this, please know that. I'm asking for something that's reasonable, so we can do it correctly the first time around and not discover later that maybe that was a little too, too rushed, maybe, I don't know. We don't know until you get through the assessment.
I want you to know, Madam, Madam Treasurer, like, I know you said, like, hey, you know, give us some time. We're gonna give some time, at least for myself, but I also don't want to sit here January first, or, you know, and it's like, oh, we're still taking our time, you know, because we've done that for a very long time in this city.
I agree. It's been too long, quite frankly. That audit report, that what Plant Moran has flagged us on has been reoccurring, repetitive, many years. Not just last year, not just the year before that, it was many years. So it's getting addressed, and we're working through it.
The only thing I'd like to add to this, though, um, on a counterpoint, um, Madam Treasurer, is this says, this is to be implemented by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So it's not asking for it to be closed today, I just want to make sure to clarify that.
I did see that, yes, thank you. And I do want to add something, Councilman Muscat, you and I had a conversation today and yesterday.
Yes, we did.
And I will publicly say this, our systems, our processes that the city has are archaic. They need to be updated. BSNA, I agree with you, if a hundred and ten percent's allowed, okay, no, it's only a hundred percent, right? There's only a hundred percent. Um, the software, we're not utilizing it to its capabilities, and we can. And that is what we're addressing, that's what we've been working on, and we're doing it together. Your finance team is working together to do that, to make those changes.
I have, I have one more.
Wait, Councilman Conston first.
Last question, I promise you, go ahead. I'm sorry, because, because my, my change, my vote may have just changed. And I want you to know, Madam, Madam Treasurer, it's staying till June thirtieth. That, that's almost a month and a half.
Yeah, thirty days. The only thing, I, I, I'm okay with that, I'm gonna tell you, June thirtieth, I'm okay with. But what I am gonna say to you, your water that you're putting in general fund, my question is why? When you have a water account, and I have an email from Brian Campbell here, because I asked him. I, I said, why would we put water into general fund when we have a water account that is a payment water account at Comerica? It takes in payments, it's a, a lockbox. Why would we not use that?
Okay.
Okay, and, and, and they really, I mean, he just, all he did is gave me a list of remaining bank accounts. And yeah, water, lockbox, water and sewer lockbox, Comerica's on here. So what I'm saying is, why not move those funds and keep it in your water account, into your water budget, in your water general ledger? That doesn't change anything, it's still the same. Pool accounting, I do know what pool accounting is. It doesn't change it. It does not change it. But you, as a council body, you hear from your residents all the time about water. And Councilman Muscat, you for years, my goodness, years.
That's what BSNA software does.
Talked about it. And so that's just all I'm gonna recommend, because you know what? Let's be transparent and not muddy the water, no pun intended, okay?
But that's what the BSNA software does, Madam Treasurer, and it saves us money.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, I, I, just, it's, it's the BSNA software that we're not utilizing.
Yes.
And each account is costing us money.
No.
Each mo.
That's not true. We get credits. We're not paying for our accounts, we're getting credits. I already showed that to you, I think I shared that with you last month or the month before.
But we don't pay anything for any account.
No. The only thing we pay for are a few wires that aren't covered by our points, like when we make wire payments, some of them. I showed you, like, in a quarter, your costs are anywhere from ninety to a hundred and fifty dollars for wires, not for your accounts. Those are credits we get.
Councilman Conston, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. We did have the presentation by, uh, Plant Moran, and I remember back, our first comptroller, when Mayor Bozzi took office, Badri Jawad indicated that you use the, the general ledger, what Councilman Muscat is referring to as our software, to keep track of, you know, the amounts of money. But each account, of course, has a service charge. Um, I remember, uh, the presentation, he said a big city like New York has like maybe fifteen accounts. We have more than that, was it forty-three, Mariana? Forty-four. So if each month, those, those, uh, thirty extra counts, costs and fees, uh, Mariana, would you know roughly the, um, you know, the, it costs us in fees, uh, ten thousand dollars each? That means if we wait two months.
Excuse me, may I please?
Or an amount.
I'm the treasurer, may I ask?
Let me finish, let me finish.
Why would you have that information?
Let's say it's two thousand dollars. Uh, each month, that's costing the city money, and the problem is to keep track of that. Comptroller, it, it, it was a nightmare. I, I remember, uh, uh, the comptroller, and I spoke with him, and the comptroller since then. So the, there's, I think, the belief that by having a money, having money in account A and other money in account B, that's more politically correct. No, the, the, that's the job of the comptroller and the treasurer to keep track of that. Okay, thank you.
I, I want to add something, because we're getting misinformation out here. We do not get charged for those accounts because we have credit points. So we need to stop saying we're paying thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, because it's erroneous. It's wrong. I've provided the council body the, the statements, the analysis that we get monthly, and you've seen, unless you didn't read it, okay? But that's not why we're here to debate, and I'm not even debating that. I actually just said I'm okay with this, okay? What I'm saying is, again, water to water, because of the controversy in the past with water accounts. And if you're going to close Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, you've got two accounts on here. There's three there, you might as well close all three, because the only reason general fund is there, which is, has like six hundred dollars in it, is so our residents can pay their taxes and water bills remotely. Okay? So close all three is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Council Chair.
So we're going, wait, hold on one second, let's keep it clear.
I want to respond to that.
Right now, the only issue, okay, we're not talking about that, we're, we're talking about just implementing this and implementing this by June thirtieth.
Yes.
We've already had a discussion with Plant Moran on the cost and what have you. We're all in agreement, at least as far as I see, on closing as much accounts as possible. I'm personally all in favor of that.
And just in a sentence, so, Madam Treasurer, what you're saying is, the information that we got about the ex, cost of the extra accounts from Plant Moran, that was wrong. Those accounts are not costing us money.
What I gave you came directly from Comerica and Chase, those are correct. That is our banks.
I looked at what you gave us, but again, I.
Are we gonna believe our bank institutions?
Well, okay, wait.
And what they provide us, of course, they're correct.
We're gonna keep arguing about whether there's charges or not. We're all in agreement that we're gonna be closing in the accounts, so, or most of our accounts. So there's no sense in arguing, what happened in the past is gone, let's move forward.
Yeah, you're right.
Chief of Staff, go ahead.
Oh, and just one more thing, again, I don't want false information, but water escrow is Chase, not Comerica. So see, they can be wrong, that's incorrect.
Okay.
Chase.
Got it, Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon. With regards to the costs, I would just recommend that you watch the public hearings that we did with Plant Moran and how those costs, um, were calculated by them. What I'm more concerned about is the indirect cost of the amount of time that it takes our accounting department to do the bank reconciliation for all of those projects. Again, from, since I've been involved in this project, it was last November. So it has been various months that Plant Moran has recommended this to the team. It is a very slow-moving process. I do encourage that the administration and the council continue to check in on these items and continue to move forward. It was the goal to have closed all of those accounts by the beginning of fiscal year in July. We're obviously not gonna meet that deadline, which means that we are still going to be utilizing our staff and a lot of their time to do those bank reconciliations. They are confusing, they are messy, they require inter-fund transfers, which have lots of mistakes in them. Those were some of the highlights from that presentation that I can recall. If I were your, your honorable body, I would invest everything that you possibly could into your finance department. They are the heart of the city, and there seems to be a lot of confusion and a lot of, um,[1790.78] and a lot of mistrust in the administration in both of those departments. And we consistently hear two different stories. So if you need more people to come up with this process, to clean it up, do it faster, I recommend that you do that now during your budget season, because it is the heart of the city, and it touches every aspect of it, and it requires major changes in the processes and procedures. And we've tried to move forward, but I would consider this baby steps in the long scheme of the game of the issues that we already know today need to be fixed. So that's my only advice to the administration.
Mariana Hernandez. Just quickly, there was a correction that the treasurer was saying on one of the accounts. She said the name or whatever is wrong is, I just want to make sure you guys are all on the same page.
I can double-check the bank account list. Again, I believe that was based off of the presentation from Plant Moran.
Okay.
Everyone is human, so yes, there could be mistakes, but if it's just a matter of changing a bank name, but you still understand which bank account it is, I wouldn't hold it up just because of that.
Okay, so.
One more.
Go ahead.
And it's our responsibility to make sure that no money is going out of restricted funds for other things. No different than when I caught years ago, money from water being paid out to repair a boom truck that trims trees. Remember that. It's our responsibility to look at that stuff. They provide us all the information. It's up to us to make sure that we look at that. So, you know, and according to the treasurer, we have provided people different ways to pay their bills, which are costing the city money. Okay? So because you're saying you're going to close one and stopping people from paying their bills somewhere else, we're providing so much to the residents, and we're paying for it. So, you know, that's a double-edged sword there too. So I've had, you know, that's.
Council Chair. We got to take this to the vote. Some quick?
Very quick. So we were cited by the state treasurer office last year that our bank reconciliations were behind. And what you're saying is the fewer accounts, the sooner we do that. It makes the bank reconciliations much easier. It can get done quicker, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Chair.
So we got to take this to the vote. I just, I have, just, I mean, one second. Please. Madam Clerk, seeing that it's going to, you know, June 30th. Madam Treasurer. Clerk Treasurer. I love our clerk so much. Madam Treasurer, seeing that it's, you know, June 30th, I would have personally wanted to have liked to see it June 15th, to be honest.
Well, I'm okay with that, because again, when you look at the agenda item, that date was not on here. Oh, it's down on the bottom. My, pardon me. So, excuse me?
It was in the package.
Thank you. It's right here on the very bottom. So I'm okay with that. But again, like I said, water to water, I mean, that's going to be your call, right? Because.
But doesn't BSNA, you know, I mean, look, from one.
Well, the general ledger, yeah. And again, I'm very familiar, because, you know, trying to, you know, explain general ledger language, I'm very familiar with that. And I talked to Mr. Camiller from Plant Moran when I was at the Michigan Municipal Treasure Association, getting my Michigan Certified Public Treasurer, right? And we talked about this, and I said, it works. I know pool accounting works. That's not the question. The question is, we have to be ready for it.
Yeah, well, May 30th, I mean, June 30th is.
Yep. And I said this from the very beginning. I said I was okay with this. I agree. And yes, bank reconciliations do become quicker. Again, that follows, the comptroller's office has done a great job. Plant Moran has done a great job, but we've been paying Plant Moran a lot of money. We'd like to see them kind of weed it out a little bit, right? And reduce, so we're not spending so much money with them. Again, it is just, let's call it Chase, Water Escrow. And if you would, please add, if you would, add Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, General Fund. Add all three, please.
So the motion has already been made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Constant. But Councilman Muscat, can you just make it, provided that's the right, the proper bank, based on?
I'd like to, can we add that? Make sure it's the right, we put the right bank account number? And the bank, the correct bank.
The treasurer and administrations are agreeing on. Do you want Federal Savings Bank? Okay.
Are you adding the other, the third one?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, are you?
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure you're adding the third Dearborn Federal Savings Bank. You've got water, tax, and general fund at that. So you're adding a additional count that's not on here, because the three are like a package deal. General fund for that would go to 7191.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, that would make sense.
All right. So motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Constant. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 11A ordinances and resolutions.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council says move the proposed ordinance number H-23-01, an ordinance of the City of Dearborn Heights, providing that code of ordinances, City of Dearborn Heights be amended by amending section 6.97 concerning the unlawful feeding of pigeons, gulls, and doves to include an addendum to address unlawful ground feeding, unlawful feeding of feral and stray cats, and/or dogs, and unlawful feeding of pigeons, gulls, and doves be considered red for the second time and become effective upon publications as provided by law in 11A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
My question is going to be to the Director. I did my, I did a little bit of research. I actually, I'm okay with this. I had a conversation with Mrs. Alawan earlier, and the only question that I have is at my home, believe it or not, I have a bird feeder. And on that bird feeder, no matter what happens, when the birds are eating, you have some excess of bird food falling on the ground. Granted, I don't want to be ticketed. Are you saying that I have to get rid of this? Based on your discretion.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
No, Councilman Bedu, no. I'm not saying that at all. Very rarely do we have issues with people with bird feeders. Again, the main goal here was to get something on the books where we can enforce on people that are feeding animals unlawfully. Most of the people that have feeders generally don't have, bird feeders don't generally don't have problems with them. Most people are good about cleaning up the area, or they have the basins that catch the dropping. So I don't think.
There is, there is a basin, by the way. I mean, it's still splattered sometimes, but there is.
No, and again, I don't, I don't think anybody's ever called or complained about your property.
I would call all my neighbors and.
I can check that. No, again, that's not, that's not what we're looking for. We've had very, very.
And look, and I just want to kind of emphasize that a little bit. So this would be somebody getting bird food, putting it on front of their house, dropping it on the ground, and saying, hey, pigeons, here doves, here you guys go, everybody eat, which by me, by all means, I'd love everybody to do that, but, you know. I guess we also don't want to see the rodents, and I get it.
We've had people that have done that before in their front. They've thrown it out across their front yard, bird seed. We can't have that. That obviously attracts, and they were, this person in particular I'm thinking of was actually right near the creek in the south end. That's a terrible combination. That's just begging for a rod infestation, so.
And thank you, Mr. Disham. And I just want to thank you for this, and I want to actually really congratulate Mr. Bunker. I know tirelessly for over a year. I want to thank Mrs. Alawan. I want to thank everybody for putting this together. I know it's not going to be tailored to exactly what everybody wants, but I want you guys to know that it's a collaborative effort between the administration, the Director, our team that put this together. So guys, I hope that we can work here together, and I hope that one day I don't get a phone call that Mr. Disham is issuing tickets for somebody properly feeding cats. And I hope that nobody will ever take somebody's cat without properly knowing that it belongs to somebody and take it to the, you know, humane society or getting it neutered or spayed or whatever the terminology that I want to use. So, I mean, look, at the end of the day, as long as we're all working here together, if somebody sees, God forbid, Sophie ever runs away my dog, please feed it, and don't, you know, she's already spayed. So, thank you.
Also, I want to point out for a lot of members of the audience and online, keep in mind, whatever ordinance, obviously, whether approved or denied, but let's presume it's approved, it's not etched in stone. And obviously, eventually, if we find that there's potential issues down the line and all of us agree between the residents that have been involved and the ordinance department, obviously, changes will be made. But the ultimate concern for the ordinance department is to make sure that people, before they just automatically throw food all over the grass, which, yes, it feeds some of the cats, but, and I spoke with Officer Bunker on this, it also feeds a lot of, you know, rats, et cetera, et cetera, unwanted feeders, if you want to call them. So with that being the case, if you have any intent, contact the ordinance department, find out what the rules are, and they'll walk you through the process and, of course, eventually allow you to do anything within the constraints of the ordinance. With any other discussions on this? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
That one, you know, I was in Lebanon, and we were talking about this a year ago.
Lot of work. Next item on the agenda is item 13A. But before we go to 13A, I want to take just a quick interruption here. Councilman Bedu did the math on the item 616.
Six sixteen.
And fund transfers. We've already approved it, but I just want to make sure, comptrollers, treasurers, everybody, he figured out the math, and the numbers are.
2,862, and we're approving 3,945. So while the discussion was going on, the paper was in front of me, I figured I'd do the math.
Either way, can somebody follow up with us? Make sure they get the corrected math in there, and if asked to come back for final approval, send it to me, and I could have it approved by Thursday. Okay? Next item on the agenda is item 13A, business license renewals.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for Antonio's Cucina Italiana at 26356 Ford Road and Applebee's number 8085 at 26582 Ford Road, as outlined in 13A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is members of the public. First, we'll have comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I don't want to take up too much time here, but there's so much wrong with what's going on in this city as far as the way it looks is, I could speak for five hours here. We may have to set up a study session with the public involved, because what we've been doing for the last 20 years is not working. We can hire 500 ordinance officers, and it would not solve a thing. So I'm going to ask you to set up a study session where we can talk about blight in this city. Seems like we have residents that just don't care. And I've said 100 times at that podium years ago before I was a councilman, the only way you're going to stop this is if you hit them hard in the pocketbook, because that's the only thing that they understand. I probably did something I might not should have done Sunday, when I've been watching a certain house for almost a week and a half. And I was driving by Sunday, and I says, I seen two cars in the driveway, garage door open, two people sitting in there. I got out, I handed my city business card to the woman of the home. And I told her, I said, before I call the city, I want to let you know, you need to cut your three-foot-tall weeds. I mean, it was not just, it was 100% weeds, and weeds all over the flower beds. And it was kind of laughing at me, and I said, look, this is not funny. Look at your house and look at the rest of your neighborhood. This is out of hand. Her husband called me, and I've never been cursed at like that in my life. And I had to be rude to hang up, because it was on speakerphone, and my wife and my mother-in-law was listening to it. And we have to do something, okay? Absolutely have to do something, and please set up a study session where we can get ordinance, the police, and the residents together so we can formulate a game plan on where to go at the next step. And I have, I have one more thing, please.
I just want to add on to your thing as well. You know, since you've been talking about it for these many years, I drive around now, and I say, if Councilman Muscat sees this house, wow.
I get tired of turning in addresses. The ordinance department must think I'm nuts, because I'm giving them five, and I'm only giving them a few that I see. I'm not giving them all, because there's no way in the world I can stop and write down every address along Cherry Hill Road, Ford Road, okay? Warren, and even the businesses, they're horrible. And I'm just sick and tired of looking at the city like this, okay? And it's gotten out of hand in the last 20 years. This has not just happened last year or this year. It's been happening for a number of years. But one other thing, I had a business owner in the city who lives out of state, and he called me and told me that how he's been in discussion with our chief of police over some incidents that have been happening at his places of business. And I was kind of, made me feel good and chivalry when he said he has a, he goes, he's the nicest man he's ever talked to in law enforcement. And he said, and he has businesses all over the country. He says, the man was just passionate. He's working hard with them, trying to resolve the issues at his business. And he stays in, and he calls him. The chief actually calls him on a weekly basis. And I just want to say thank you to the chief for being so, so great, accessible to the people. I've never had this before where a chief of police actually did that, okay? And actually got into a police car and did a run himself to a business when they have problems. So I just want to tip my cap to the police chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Council Chair.
Any other council members?
You know, I'm going to leave this one brief. You know, I'm starting to see with the younger generation, with a lot of the parents at home, children are going through a lot in today's society. Things are a lot different than when I was in high school or when I was in middle school. And believe it or not, I graduated not too long ago. And 15 years ago, wow, that's old. And so, you know, it's catching up. But really, you know, I look at my niece, I look at my nephew. You know, my nephew's this famous guy on TikTok, and he's making money. And I think to myself, you're on social media posting up your muscles, and you make thousands of dollars? That's great. What are you going to do when you no longer have muscles and you're of older age? You know, are you still going to be making all that money? And so I really think social media has become a platform that's become a facade. And I say this to those who are watching at home, to the parents at home, stay close to your children, spend a lot of time with your children. You know, being a father, and believe it or not, my wife is expecting another one, so soon to be a girl dad. Thank you. You know, I pledge to myself that no matter what I do, I'm going to spend as much time with my son, and, you know, God willing, my daughter as well. And I'm going to spend more time with my children than my children are going to spend with their phones. And I echo this to the residents in Dearborn Heights and across the country and across the world. Guys, mental health is a real thing. It is real. And really, you know, spend time with your family. Ask the question to your friends, you know, that friend of yours that smiles all day might really have something going on. You might, your little brother, your little sister, your nephew, your aunt, your cousin, who may seem like everything's normal and fine, may really have something going on with them. So have those hard conversations. It's okay. And I know that recently that there was a passing in Dearborn Heights, so I'd like to give a moment of silence to Mrs. Perez, so if we can do that, Council Chair.
Go ahead. Thank you, Council Chair Musa.
May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other council members have comments? Councilman?
Thank you, Council Chair. Just to repeat what Councilman Muscat said, it's warm weather. Our grass, it grows fast. I went to cut my grass for the first time, and of course, I have two lawn, both were broke.
First time?
For the first time. And. And.
Done mine four.
Okay, well, I was like, so.
I should have sent the ordinance officer to your house.
That's. Give me, give me a minute, I was telling everybody to drive slow.
All right, any other council members?
Council Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. Um, first of all, I want to let everyone know that I, as much as it's, it's said, I haven't, I do not object against anything about the golf course being there or the banquet facility. Um, I appreciate what the two gentlemen that are operating these two entities are doing. My concern is the amount of money, the taxpayer money being spent on these. Um, I believe that an ADA compliant restroom would be a great thing that I'd approve. Um, but that being said, I just want to, I just want to clear that up. I have nothing against the golf course itself, and it seems like every, everything I take a stand on, I'm getting attacked by it, no matter what it is, I don't know why. But, um, like, uh, Councilman Baydoun said, um, you know, I always speak about families. And in my family, I have a new family, as most of you know, and the video games are banned in our house. Very rarely do our kids play video games. If I can't find something for them to do, then that's my fault. It'd be at homework or playing with them, doing something else, but video games are not one hundred percent banned, but very, very, very rarely played, and if they are, they're really wholesome games. Um, speaking of family, we've got a great family event coming up. Uh, the thirtieth annual E Course Creek Rain Garden Maintenance Day is, uh, May twentieth at the Richard A. Young Center. And if anybody doesn't know what rain gardens are, they're fabulous, I don't want to get into it again, you can look it up online. We have one of the biggest rain gardens in the area, there's only a few bigger. The, uh, facility at Richard A. Young Center, the parking lot's one of only a few in the state where there's no drains, the water goes through the parking lot into the ground, it doesn't drain into the creek. Very, very fun time, it's a good wholesome thing, you can get together with your family, bring them. Um, and, uh, speaking of, uh, that area, District Seven Dads Club, baseball and softball, registration is now being, taking place. You can go on their website and register their kids' ages, boys and girls, from five years old to eighteen, and I think there's some leagues even a little bit older than that. Um, I want to say a shout out thank you to Priority Waste. They're not perfect, but I'll tell you what, you send them a problem and they take care of it. And, uh, they've, they've been really good, especially Paul. Um, any, any concerns I have, he, he takes care of them right away, you know, I'm, I'm glad they're around. Um, speaking of family, I had a couple of my family members this past Saturday at an event sponsored by the library. Michael McCaffrey was, I guess he was heading it up, was the Little Red Schoolhouse where they had, um, Thompson Maxwell, I think, are you going to talk about it? I don't want to steal your thunder, but this was unbelievable, that we have something like this in our backyard. And from the city, myself and, uh, Bill Bosse were there. And I, after I left, I said, my gosh, I'm so glad I came to this. I was so amazed what we have right here in Dearborn Heights. And, uh, the mayor's assistant, Mariana Horandis, was also there and her husband and so, and some other people, but, um, that was like fantastic, it was unbelievable. Uh, shout out to the building maintenance department and, uh, and, uh, one last thing is this afternoon, I was honored to participate in a, uh, activity at Annapolis High School. Uh, I was there not to support anything that was, was done or is going to happen. I was there to support the, the kids of Annapolis High School for their, um, their constitutional rights, for freedom of speech, their freedom to assemble, and all their constitutional rights. It was a great event, and it was really touching the whole time, and I wish more people had showed up. The students came out in droves, I mean, actually, they came out of the building and they had kids from the junior high walk all the way from the junior high to the board office, which is quite a long distance, few miles, e- easy. But, um, that was something that I'm glad I went to too. Also, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council Chair, I just finished before Councilman Muscat scolded me about not cutting my grass sooner. Um, also remind everyone, the weather's warm and, um, uh, driving, especially through our side streets, to drive slowly. Remember the tragedy last year, uh, not only in the South End, Joyce Smith, but in Dearborn, uh, I think a young Iraqi, uh, uh, young girl was killed by someone speeding through the neighborhood. Just, uh, to drive slow and keep the lookout for the ball bouncing into the street. Uh, if, if I'm a young driver and I hit and I injure or kill somebody, I'm, I'm never going to forgive myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman?
Okay, I, I want to add a couple of things too. I toured the golf course on a golf cart with Jason on Sunday. Things are coming along nicely, and I did see one of the restrooms, and I did make some comments on that as well. Um, I talked to Ollie because I, I saw no lights. The electricity is a problem, but we could possibly do some solar that would make it work for us. And then, um, I've spent three hours in the last day and a half talking to people about the blight in the neighborhood, so it is a big time issue. And then, uh, I just wanted to let people know that the League of Women Voters has been participating at the local high schools with the high school students. I didn't realize seventeen and a half, they can register to vote as long as they are eighteen when the election comes. I participated at Fortson for two classes, Dearborn High for two, and we now have, uh, signed up Etzel Ford in Annapolis, more to come, so check into that, and, uh, it, it's a good thing. Um, I might as well go on to the announcements. Uh, on May, uh, Tom did that one, on May twenty-fourth, six P M., the E Course Creek has their meeting uh, in Dearborn Heights, the South End, three 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 five, yes, the commission, at three 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 five South Beach Daley, everybody's welcome. And especially, I would like to see a turnout on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at seven P M. We have Senator Santana coming from Lansing to talk to the people. It'd be nice if some people could show up and tell her of your concerns because she's trying very hard to work with us.
And what time would that be?
At seven P M.
Yeah.
On Thursday, May twenty-fifth, same location, three 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 five South Beach Daley.
And as for your meeting?
That's the neighborhood meeting, South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements from administration? Go ahead.
Yes. Yeah. Um, okay, so, um, I just want to let you guys know that Funding Scout, um, for the short amount of time they've been working on this, I, I mentioned at the last meeting that they have several, uh, uh, grants that were actually we applied for. So just to let you know, I mean, as of right now, with the short amount of time, we received confirmation for two grants totaling two, three hundred, close to four hundred thousand dollars. You know, that's going to be for the E Course Creek mitigation and also water, uh, conveyance upgrade. And also, uh, um, the M Dot School Crossing at Crestwood, uh, that one is approved as well for a hundred and thirteen thousand. And, uh, a good thing about the first gra, the two grants, uh, for the E Course Creek and the water upgrade, uh, conveyance upgrade is that's a ninety percent, uh, so that's, uh, they're giving us ninety percent, so ten percent match. And, uh, because we have a great plan, and I want to thank, uh, uh, the people working on it, you know, uh, and also, uh, Mariana and also Mr. Deeb, uh, they've been, they supplied, uh, a great plan, uh, to the state. The state was impressed, and it's, they've never, they said, never seen something was done so completely that they actually approved both of them. Instead of one, they approved both grants. So we're going to get two, and, uh, the M Dot for a hundred and thirteen, uh, thousand. I was told that the school might pay, uh, whatever the off cost, you know, the match, so they might pay for it. So the city is not, uh, can be paying for that as well, so that's good. Good news.
Thank you very much. Show Mr. Janey's head beyond the M Dot one.
Hello.
Treasure, go ahead.
Hi, so I'm speaking as treasure. Um, first of all, I want to say how wonderful democracy is. They, I mean, I appreciate every single person, whether they're watching, joining on Zoom or here in person, the administration, the mayor, the council. I mean, all of the conversations, the questions, I mean, everything on like item ninety, for example, is really important in the process, so thank you for that and for your questions. I, I really do value that, so I wanted to share that. I also want to do a quick Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers this Sunday, or anybody that, oh, don't forget.
Boy, you have to remind me now.
You will be in trouble. So, or anyone who does, you know, take on that role of, of a mother, you know? It's really, there's a lot of different walks of life and people that take on that role, but don't forget your mothers this weekend, okay? And then the very last thing I have is, um, the Treasures Office often, when people come to our window and we have conversations with them and we're friendly and talking, we, we find out a little bit more about them and what their needs are. And we want the citizens, the residents of Dearborn Heights to know we, the city of Dearborn Heights, participate in two really great programs that can help you if you need assistance with paying your utility bills, your water, your electric, your delinquent property taxes, your broadband internet. Um, the first one is MYHAF, which is Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund. Each household that qualifies can qualify for up to twenty-five thousand dollars per household in funding. And that's an online application, but what we want you to know is our office is available to help you if you need assistance applying because of it being an online application. So I want to tell you about that one first. The next one I want to tell you about briefly is called LIWAP, which is Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. This is, uh, the administrator of this program is Wayne Metro. You can contact them at three one three three eight eight nine seven nine nine. They can get, uh, help you for, again, if you're qualified, for up to fifteen hundred dollars in direct payment for household water accounts that are in arrears. So we want people to know about that. Now you say, well, how are you getting that information out to your citizens? What I want to tell you is that throughout City Hall, we have these wonderful flyers, and hopefully we can get them on, uh, WDHT if we have not already done so. The libraries have, Michael McCaffrey, Director McCaffrey back here, has helped us put the flyers out throughout the libraries. We're getting them in the senior centers. Your Dearborn Heights Today magazine that gets mailed out to every single household will feature articles on both these programs, along with how to apply or who to contact. Uh, we've done local press releases, social media, as well as print media. We've offered resource fairs online and in person. And the next goal is to visit your neighborhood groups, churches, synagogues, mosque, and get the word out and try to network with some nonprofits. The last thing I have, if you keep an eye on your Dearborn Heights Today or contact your Treasures Office, we're going to be scheduling resource days. And so again, this is going to be set up where we're going to help you, the resident, if you need assistance applying for either one of these programs, we will help you do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Miss Treasure?
Should I give you our phone number? Do you want our phone number?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Treasures Number, Office Number is three one three seven nine one three four one zero. You can contact us anytime and we're available to answer your questions and help you navigate through the process.
Miss Treasure?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for the conversation we had over the phone the other day and, uh, along with the, uh, Deputy Comptroller.
Yes.
On resolving an issue for a businessman. Uh, that worked out real, real well, and I, and I'm, I thank you for taking, uh, some of the ideas that I had and you're going to run with them, and I appreciate that very kindly.
Absolutely.
Thanks again, I appreciate that.
That's the importance, we always learn, listen and learn, there's always room for improvement in government.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Director McCaffrey, come on up.
Well, hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of items. First off, I want to thank everyone who worked on the Little Red Schoolhouse this past month. Uh, thanks to Lisa McCaffrey, A.J., Carolyn, Lynn, uh, who helped clean up the grounds a great deal, paint the building, and Building Maintenance who came out and cleared over ten dump trucks worth of brush, repaired the bathrooms. Uh, also thanks to all those residents who welcomed our guests from the Boston Tea Party Museum and ships. Um, and thanks to Mayor Bill Bosse and Councilman Tom Wenzel for their support and coming out. Uh, for those of you unable to make it this past weekend, we will be having another honoring of Thompson Maxwell this fall when the Sons of the American Revolution erect a plaque there. Um, the building is, it, it, it holds up really, really well over time, surprisingly. It had been many years since it had been opened and it was in relatively good shape, just needed some painting, so that's a beautiful thing to see.
Is this weekend?
Uh, this past weekend.
In the fall?
Yeah, oh, the fall, in the fall, yep. Um, next, Tuesday, May eighteenth, at Carolyn Candy Library from six thirty to seven thirty P M. Join us for the quinoa, asparagus spring medley. Wake up your taste buds with the wonderful foods of spring. Learn to make a light, refreshing, high-protein quinoa dish feeling, or featuring dandelion greens, radishes, asparagus, uh, with flavor of sour from lemons. I need to word that a little better. Uh, the recipe and samples will be given out at the class, uh, taught by Chef Valerie Wilson. So that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you very much. Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman?
I wanted to thank Mike again for everything he's done. And he, he kind of didn't give you all the information. Uh, Thompson Maxwell is buried there at the Little Red Schoolhouse. And who is Thompson Maxwell? He was a participant in the Boston Tea Party. Of the seventy-five to a hundred that participated, there was only three buried outside the east area, Massachusetts and Pennsylvania. And ours, Thompson Maxwell, is the furthest west participant buried from the Boston Tea Party, right here in Dearborn Heights. And that's, that is, that's, is phenomenal, that, that, you know, that had someone like that. And that is right here, it's right by Saints Abyn in the South End, the Saints Abyn parking lot. You get a chance, go out there, the cemetery's fantastic, and I don't know, how, how old is that cemetery?
Um, it would be eighteen twenties?
Eighteen twenty, that's how.
About when it, yeah, when the first building was erected on the side.
And, and just the Little Red Schoolhouse, that location, that was one of the first government, the areas, Mike, Mike's had a statement.
Yeah, it was the first town hall, uh, the Township of Buckland.
Yeah.
Uh, which went from Canton to Detroit and from Warren to, um, Taylor at the time. And it was the first seat of government for the.
Yeah, it's phenomenal, it's right here in Dearborn Heights. I mean, it's, it's, it's a historical gem. I, I told Mike at the end of the, the event Saturday, I says, what are you going to do when Greenfield Village wants to come here and take this building down and put an assembly in the Greenfield Village?
We got tall steel fans, so.
Again, for trespassing. But thanks again, that was fantastic, fantastic presentation.
Okay, thank you. Great information, Councilman.
Chief of Staff, come on up.
Good afternoon, I'm speaking as the Chief of Staff. I just handed a, um, correction on the invoice that, uh, Councilman Mobaydoun was concerned about. It seems that when the documents got scanned, a page was missing, so you now have the corrected version of it. The numbers are correct in that one. Um, so that's.
So just to make sure, so the numbers that were in there is correct, but the way it was written up was wrong?
No.
So it was scanned, it was double-sided, so it seems like they missed the, the back page of page number two.
But I'm saying, as I recall, wasn't it three, nine, four, five already when we approved it?
That is the correct number, I'm just providing the page that was missing, which is why I didn't add up.
Okay. But I want you to know the original page had one additional page on there.
So it was just two, but it's three pages. I checked the scanned version right before I printed this one for all.
But the total amount that we approved originally was correct?
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to get at, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, so this is just the more detailed.
So, and then I also just want to make sure, so if I see the four fifty, I'm not timing it by three?
No, so remember, most of our, um, legal assistant range of salary is around the one hundred and forty, one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I believe we have one law firm that may be a little bit bigger, but, um, that's typically what the amount is for all of these. All right.
We're good.
Thank you, thank you so much. Council Chair told me it was three times this number.
No.
Three times.
Okay.
No, no.
Okay, um, now with regards to our upcoming meetings, I do want to announce that Monday, the twenty-second of May, we're going to have another public hearing for yet another, um, Eagle S R F loan. This one is a larger amount of money than the prior one we just saw, it's for our water and sewer infrastructure. So again, one of the major goals that, um, the city engineer, the mayor, and, uh, myself with Funding Scout have had is to lower the capital expenses that the city has and try to utilize grants and loans available for us.
Fifteenth?
The twenty-second.
What time?
Twenty-second?
Yes. It's hopefully going to be at six o'clock, um, I just need to verify one more thing. The twenty-second, yes, so we typically try to keep them at six o'clock. Um, so again, there's a lot of momentum right now for water and sewer projects, there's a lot of funding available for cities to apply for it, and we are trying to take full advantage of that. I did also want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Nancy Breyer and Councilman Muscat, and I am surprised that you didn't mention our study session from yesterday, our public hearing. So I do want to thank, uh, the Friends of the Detroit River, they came out yesterday and they presented, um, the project that they're doing right now with the twelve communities along the E Course Creek River. We recorded that presentation, so it should be available sometime next week for everybody to watch. I encourage our residents to. So if you have input with regards to what we should be doing with the green spaces along the Egress Creek, I advise that you provide your feedback. There is one more public hearing that they are doing. The surveys are open until June 30th. The last public hearing that they're going to have is going to be virtual, and it's going to be June 13th, from 12 to 1 PM. You can find the survey, as well as the information for the meeting, June 13th, 12 to 1 PM. It's virtually.
Virtual.
And you can find the information to log in, and also to provide feedback on that survey, at the detroitriver.org website. So for all those listening at home, I do encourage you to provide your feedback with that. The Egress Creek affects our community more than many of them, and I think that our voice should be out there in those surveys, okay?
Okay, thank you, Chief of Staff Hernandez, appreciate it. Any other announcements from administration? See none? Next up, we're going to go to public comments.
We have two on Zoom.
Wait, so Mr. Jamal, you have an announcement as a director?
Dana.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Good evening. We have a public hearing regarding the HUD annual funding for CDBG grant to serve low and moderate income people, senior service, senior, senior, senior citizens, and also... You're not hearing me, Mr.?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I have somebody mentioned that they are not hearing me. Well, I am unmuted, so you should. Anyway, serving eligible federally funded citizens and residents of Dearborn Heights. They are published both in Arabic and in English. They are published in Pressing Guide and the Arab American News. So the public hearing is in the Eaton Center, a senior center in the south end of the city of Dearborn Heights. We have announced that, so it is, it is May 15, Monday, at 4:15. Let me make sure I announce that in Arabic also. The Arabic speakers. هناك دعوة لحضر مؤتمر لنشر المعلومات عن مساعدات فدرالية للذين يتكلمون العربية. هناك من يتكلم لكم ويشترح لكم إذا أحبتم أن تشاركوا في هذا. هذا موجود على جريدة سر الولم. ويمكن الاتصال في مكتابنا على التلفون 313.
No, 791.
791.
791.
350.
I caught that one too.
Yeah.
Sure you did.
When the Arabic, the Arabic, the English numbers are the true Arabic numbers.
Right.
And the Arabic numbers we use are the Indian numbers. Just for...
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jamal.
Thank you, Director. At this point, we're going to go ahead and go to pub, I don't see anybody else from the administration, so we're going to go ahead and go to public comments. You will have three minutes. Please state your state, I'm sorry, your city.
Street.
Street and name.
Screwed up.
I can do the public comments announcement, but I'm not going to do that, I'm going to skip it today, just...
Be respectful.
Be respectful, be polite, you will have your opportunity to speak, nothing will, nothing will be cut out, but just, just be respectful. No need for swearing, no need to get the yell, scream, be respectful. So come on up, we'll go ahead and start with in-person, and we'll go ahead and go to Zoom next. I see two people on Zoom. Come on up. Mr. Kupchak contacted me and asked for an extra minute, so you will have four minutes, please, one second.
So hang on, one second. Well, I'll just restart it for a minute.
But before you do, I, I always have to ask, are you speaking as a city employee?
No, I'm speaking as a resident.
As a resident, okay.
Ken Kupchak, Maven Street, I'm speaking as a resident of the city of Dearborn Heights. I've been a resident for 30 years, and I'm speaking in regards to the May 1st budget meeting.
Mr. Kupchak, please.
The TPOM was demoralized by Comptroller in a PowerPoint presentation and represented as a...
I can hardly hear you, sir.
Wait, slow. You know, I'm going to start your time again, but just slow it down a little bit.
I am speaking as a resident of the city of Dearborn Heights. I've been a resident for 30 years. I'm speaking in regards to the May 1st budget meeting. The TPOM union was demoralized by the Comptroller in a PowerPoint presentation and represented as a workforce with very little skills, education, and/or thinking in order to make decisions in the case for making raises for the directors. Their PowerPoint display was beyond ridiculous and a slap in the face to single out one union out of nine city unions whom you apparently consider the lowest of the low in order to make yourself look more desirable for the raises, unbelievable. The TPOM is a backbone of the city. These are the ones that open the doors in the morning, they're the first people you see when you come to City Hall, and on the streets all hours a day, so you can come do your job. The clerical staff generates revenue for the city, they take care of the residents, and use skills to make this happen. The TPO members are the first of the first responders. If they don't do their job, no one else can do theirs. The TPO members maintain the city buildings, they make sure the lights are and heat are on, and the buildings are clean. The TPO members plow the snow off the streets so the residents can get to work and emergency vehicles can get to the residents. They sweep the streets, take care of trees, and trim the ones that have fallen. Anytime of day or night, the employees are on call 24/7 for all city emergencies. The TPO members do their best to keep up the patching of the crumbling streets, replacing signs, and putting up barricades. The TPO members fix water main breaks, vac, vacuum out sewers anytime, day or night, in sub-low temperatures, jumping to 10-foot deep holes so residents have water. They catch stray dogs, hump hold city ordinance, so the city does not become a slum. All these jobs take more than minimal skills, and they do require critical thinking. They have a great level of skills needed to, to order and operate software and equipment required to keep the city moving. Can you operate a sweeper, a backhoe, a vector truck? Can you jump in a hole and fix a water main break in 20 degrees below zero, catch a stray dog? These are a few of examples that take more than minimal skills to do their job. Have you ever spent week, a day for the TPO members to see what skills they have? Could you complete even one task they do? Do you know that in fact, TPO members do have college degrees? That being said, what did you know, what do you have known to accomplish to qualify you for a raise since you lived to work? Why are we playing Pat Moran to do work that you are doing such a good job? The citizens who technically are your employer want to know why you continue to spend millions of dollars for Plant Moran, and plants millions more, just more, to do your job. In the past, under good leadership, the skills the TPO members have got job done, why is this a problem now? The majority of the TPO workers have, they put their blood, sweat, and tears in this city five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, and have been subject to wage cuts and then raises that account to next to nothing. They are still here. They have continued to give up, give up days lieu of pay increases, and now you want to hold that against them, compare your wages with theirs, even though you afford the same benefits as them. Most directors have been employed with the city less than two years, and some less than a year. Why do you deserve a raise? Don't degrade and demoralize the DPO employees who have been here through thick and thin, and know much more about the city and how to operate it than to just make yourself look good. You have now undervalued the TPO employees before they even walk through the doors to work each day. What is your value to the city? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, anybody in the audience that has a public comment? Come on up.
Hassan Saab, Dearborn Heights, and John Daly. Just a question to Mr. Wenzel about the bathrooms that is concerned. The Pro Shop does have an ADA bathroom, accessible bathroom, and all the bathrooms in the golf course inside are being completely renovated. As for the outside bathrooms, that golf course has been there for 100 years, those bathrooms have never even had a path to them. They're just grass, there would be no way possible to get a real chair there, just, they're grandfathered in that way. But there is a bathroom that's open in the Pro Shop.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Come on up, ma'am. How are you?
Hi.
You may want to bring down the microphone a little bit closer to you. Yep, there we go. City street name, please.
I have been a resident...
Wait, city street name, I'm sorry. City you live in, the street you live on, and the name, your name.
I live in Dearborn Heights. My name is Arlene Shornack.
And what street, please?
I live on Ann Arbor Trail.
Thank you.
And that's my question, can somebody do something about this speed that the people are going? They are not driving the speed limit. They are speeding. They don't, they go through, a lot of times through the lights, they just go right through the one that's at Saints Sabina's. And I would like to know what can be done about this, because somebody's, I, I heard somebody got killed on Ann Arbor Trail, but it was down, down the other end. But I live between Robindale and Nightingale, and it's just horrible. And there are so many cars. I sat one day outside, and fif, I was, it was 15 minutes, and there were 100 cars that went down Ann Arbor Trail.
Okay, well, I, I, I thank you for your comments, ma'am, and, and this is unfortunately a problem not only in our city, in multiple cities, but we have Director Swarpel here from the Dearborn Heights Police, Swarpel, I'm sorry, it's both sides of the face. If you don't mind, if you could either walk over to him, and, and he'll be more than happy to at least give you some information on that. Okay? But it is, I, I tell you, with no pun intended, it is on the police department's radar. I mean, they, they, I've had many conversations with the chief about this, and they are aware of this being a problem and a challenge, and they are working on, on results for that.
Totally everywhere.
Well, I've seen it years ago, I've seen a boy go bowling, rolling, rolling underneath somebody's car.
Unfortunately, yes. No. Thank you. Appreciate that, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the audience? Name, city, street, and as a resident or as an employee?
As a resident. Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights.
Okay.
Wayne County, Michigan, United States. Earth. Did I cover everything?
You got it. It's the clerks, not me.
Where were you born? I wasn't going to speak until this fine young lady up here got up and spoke, and I live in the same area as she does. And there is an increase in speeding through there. But one thing I do, I have noticed though, too, is when Heinz Park floods, which it does, and Wayne County closes Heinz Park, it closes it from Ann Arbor Trail to, or Our Drive to Ann Arbor Trail in Westland. So when people come off Ford Road, they like to take Heinz Drive, they hit Our Drive, it's closed. Everybody goes down Ann Arbor Trail. Is there any way we can talk to our county officials about closing Heinz Drive at Ford Road to cut down that traffic in the residential area along Ann Arbor Trail? Because they use Ann Arbor Trail all the way down. Is there anything that we can do with that, and that might help with some of the traffic and the speeding, because drivers get upset because their route's closed, they're going a different way, they're trying to get home, people are anxious nowadays? Is there anything we, we, we can do on the county level?
So, so that's something obviously that we can't comment on, as far as, like, that's not something we handle. But what I'd suggest, either email someone from the police department, they could pursue it, or you could email our Commissioner David Kenezic. But if, me personally, if I was you, I would just start with our police department, emailing them your, your questions, concerns, and ideas, and I'm sure they will pursue that further with our Wayne County Commissioner. And I, and I know Commissioner Kenezic watches these, so I'm sure he'll also be hearing this. And I could give you his phone number too, if you'd like.
He lives across the street from my parents.
Perfect. Here we go. Okay, no one else here? Okay, so next, we're going to go ahead and go to Zoom. I did see Mr. Dana, he was on first, so go ahead, Dana, please. City, street, and name, you'll have three minutes, go ahead.
Dearborn Heights, Stanley Park Street. What else did I need to say?
Name.
My name's Dana Hirsch. I wanted to say, Councilman, Councilman, I can't think of his name now. Wenzel and I had a little exchange over Facebook the last couple of days, it was over his post on his, on his annual fundraiser. And I think, just as a suggestion, because there's a lot of confusion, he's having that Inxter versus the Dearborn Heights Golf Course. And I think this is a kind of suggestion, maybe you could have said something in there, you know, hey, look forward to having it next year at Dearborn Heights, you know, we can't have food, that kind of thing. You raised some good points, can't have food there, other, other issues they brought up about scheduling, things like that. A lot of people looked at it and said, hey, why is the city council from Dearborn Heights having this golf party in Inxter? So that was one thing that confused me as well. Another thing I want to bring up is, Mr. Jamal, you know, I met him a long time ago after we got him into the city, actually sat down and spoke with him. Honorable guy, he talks a lot. I told him that.
Talks a lot.
He, but, you know, as it goes to one of the issues that we spoke about, Councilman Wenzel, he's done a hell of a job with the spending on the senior centers. He really has, and he's continuing to do that. I think that was an unfair pit against him. I think he's done a hell of a job with that. The other thing is, you know, our ordinance department, you know, all the council people here, I think have said something about our city being, having a problem with, with ordinance. I don't think if, if the ordinance department, you know, cites you, or if they give, you know, give you a warning, I think it's unfair to attack the ordinance department and say, oh, the ordinance department's picking on me, or whatever. Just kind of keep it to yourself, or deal with the ordinance director. Because then you've got, oh, it's good enough for the residents to get a ticket, but it's not good enough for the councilmen to get a ticket. And I know that's not what you're trying to say, when you bring it out in a council meeting, that's the perception that we get. Good enough for the regular folks, but not good enough for me. I think the city's done a hell of a good job, as compared to the previous administration. I'm proud of the city, I'm proud of the council people, getting along, proud of the administration. I mean, that's why I took the time to do those, those name-placing programs. I mean, I took the time to do that, talk with the mayor, talk with a bunch of people, a lot of, the city's done a heck of a good job since it started. I think, I think if they work together, you guys can do, can do great things for the city of Dearborn Heights. Thank you very much, you're back. Good night.
Okay, thank you, Dana, appreciate it. Next up is Vince Strapkowski, city, street name again, please.
Who?
Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street, Wayne County, Michigan.
Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights, yeah, where, obviously. I have to agree with Mr. Muscat, but what I'd like to add on is that if you do add this meeting, is to get our judges involved. Because like Mr. Muscat said, you hit them in the pocketbooks, people are going to start changing their attitudes. But you also got to get the judges to stick to the fines. So maybe we get our judges involved in this meeting that Mr. Muscat's requested, that might be a good idea. Also, Ann Arbor Trail, Mrs. Shornack, good to see you out there. I've known her since I was this high. Mr. Sh, Mr. Shornack used to be a, we even Dearborn Heights police officer. So also the, on Ann Arbor Trail there, those little fancy speed signs you have, the one on Ann Arbor Trail, closer to telegraph, is not working. So if our police department's going by there, I think they should have noticed that it wasn't working. Also, that Little Red Schoolhouse, I remember when I was in grade school, our teachers would take us there once a year for the entire day, and we would hold class there. We would actually have to write on slate tablets and do our work assignments in that school. It was very neat. I'd like to see, I know this is not something that a city would handle, but if somebody could bring that up to the... but if somebody could bring that up to the school board and maybe get that functional again and teach it to Mr. Muscat. Thanks for your time, have a good week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Jamal, you already spoken as a director, you have a comment as a resident?
Yes.
Okay, we kinda make it quick.
You've got three minutes.
I am, I have to clear something very important to be clear.
Okay, wait, Director Jamal.
Director.
Director. Can, can you please, because you're making it as a public comment, city, street and name, please?
I live in Canton and I am a director in the city, just directed.
But are you speaking as a resident or as a director?
As a director and to.
Okay, but we've already done those announcements, Director, I mean, we can't keep coming up over and over.
Nobody paid attention to what Mr. Dana said and the, and the Ms. Lawrence said did not clarify, you know, that I am not responsible as the director for the community and economic development, I am not responsible for the operation of the recreation department. I cannot do that according to charter. I am just assisting other departments with the operation and making sure that the projects are done because with my experience and because my office included also support from Director Ari D B Z P. So, we are trying to spend the money that we have to make those particular, you know, services, the host of the services, the two senior centers. So, they need updates, they need all this, so I am stepping up. So, you know, I just wanna clear that, we are stepping up because the mayor assigned me to assist, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on Zoom? All right, hearing none?
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Councilman.
Support.
Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedun, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.